Session on student behavior. This topic has been front and center for us over the past months, as it is and has been across the state and nation. While we do not deal with many of the challenges that other districts do, we are seeing more complex needs in our incoming students. As you will see during this conversation this evening, we have been using many strategies to provide support as well as appropriate discipline to our students with behavioral challenges. You will also see some of the obstacles we face during the disciplinary process. However, I want to be clear that even when we face those obstacles, we do not give up on a difficult situation. There are many strategies we use that legally cannot be shared with the public in order to protect the privacy of the student. I know that that can be frustrating to parents of students who are being affected. I hope this work session provides information that will bring some clarity to our process of dealing with students who are having behavioral challenges. And remember, our ultimate goal through discipline is not to punish students, but to always change student behavior so that they can and will focus on their learning. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Shokni, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, to do introductions and then get us into our presentation this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McCabe. Good afternoon, Board members. We'll just take a quick moment, and I'll ask the team just to do a quick introduction of themselves. I know you are all familiar with us, but for those watching in the community, just want to make sure everyone's aware who's around the table because we do have a large group with you here today. Again, Nick Shokni, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction.
Carl Strecker, Director of Student Services.
Chris Whittle, Director of Special Education.
Kristy Favre, Director of Elementary Education.
Eric King, Director of High Schools.
Good evening, Steve Warnet, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Arlie Moore, Equity and Community Relations Officer.
Satya Sadaoker, Student Representative on the Board of Education.
Do we want to do us as well?
Donna Civigni, Board Member.
Tyra Pataglia, Vice President.
Cindy McCabe, Superintendent.
Marsha Herbert, President.
Pat Dorsey, Board Member.
Steve Whistler, Board Member.
Ed Omealy, Legal Counsel.
Curtis Pierce, Chief of Security and Emergency Management.
John O'Neil, Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
And also, not in attendance with us tonight, but as a direct contributor to the presentation is Amy Gramata, our Director of Middle Schools. She is with family, taking care of some grandkids. So she has been a big contributor to this work, so I just wanted to make sure I recognized her. In your packet, Board members, you have two documents. They are both rather thick. And again, we're going to work quickly through those, but the document on the left is your presentation, and on the right is an appendix. I will reference some data points that are further broken down in the appendix. The appendix has much more information specifically on our student groups, broken down a little bit further. So with that, I'm going to talk a little bit about our objectives. So we're going to build on the presentation today. We're going to start with data. It's going to take a little while for us to work through those data points. I'm going to hit these things quickly. Then we're going to talk about kind of our current practices, what's working with those, as well as some challenges and barriers that we're facing, and then again, what we can do moving forward to continuously improve our work with our students. So as we go, you're welcome to ask questions, but the presentation will build on each other, so we may get to them as we go. So again, if a question comes up as we go, please feel free to ask, but we're going to work through it as quickly as possible with a structured time for discussion towards the end as we go. As always, we want to connect our work back to the CCPS Strategic Plan. Our presentation today directly connects with Pillar Four, and that's also something that when we develop the strategic plan, we added on there that there would be an annual report on student discipline data. I'm confident that this will suffice as we go. As we reference the data points, they are as of February 28th or the end of February, early March for each of the past three years. All of our data points have a three-year component to them, so we're comparing each of the past three years as of February 28th of each year as we go. All right, so we're going to-
Shokni, I'm sorry, can I just ask one quick question about that?
Sure.
So if it's through February 28th, does that mean that, do you pick up March to June in the following year's numbers? Or do we just never look at March through June numbers?
No, we want to have apples-to-apples comparison. So what we've done in giving snapshots of our data this year is to compare them to the last two years as of February 28th. So it's the kind of two-thirds of the school year for each of the three years.
Okay, okay.
We can provide, you know, if you have any specific questions in the data as its totality, we can give you any data point that you would like as you go. But just so we're comparing, you know, clearly, you know, each year to each year, that's why we determined the cut date of February 28th as we go. So as we work through, we're going to be talking about two sets of data. One is going to be the major discipline referral data, and then the second is going to be suspension data. And again, one thing I really, really want to point out and emphasize is that increases or decreases in the number of these two types of discipline referrals or suspensions is not necessarily an indicator of a success or a problem. We use discipline, as Dr. McCabe shared, to communicate clearly with families and with students, and to shape the behavior that we're looking for. So again, oftentimes, you know, we might talk about a reduction in a referral. That doesn't mean necessarily that things are getting better. And then we might also see increases in a particular area, which may mean it's a point of emphasis for us, so we're using the disciplinary system again to make sure we're communicating those behaviors. So that's always something I like to preface data discussions around behavioral types of data points, because again, more or less isn't necessarily good or bad as we go.
So then, because of that, I mean, as you start looking at any trends, I mean, what can you draw from that if you're not looking at, you know, the increases and decreases and whether things are improving or not improving?
It can be a measure, Dr. Dorsey, but I don't think it's the sole measure of it as well, too. I think there's a lot of pieces with, as it gets back to our student achievement, our culture within our buildings, our climate within our buildings. But don't get me wrong, I'm not diminishing the impact of these two behavior points, but I think they should not be the sole factor.
I think it's a caution, because I know that, you know, in some districts, they will look at low student suspensions as proof that things are getting better. And we caution you, all of us, in doing that, because we never want to give our principals the idea that we are judging them based on how many suspensions they are giving in any one school year or any one period of time. Because just because suspensions aren't being given doesn't mean that the behaviors are improving. And so we don't want, we don't want false data, false ideas out there that a school is doing better because their suspensions are lower. That will motivate, or could motivate, a principal to suspend less, to look better. And we want to make sure that behavior is actually changing. So it's just an overall caution.
A comparison I'll draw is, as we return to in-person instruction after the pandemic, the last two years, we saw elevated numbers of discipline referrals and suspensions in some specific areas. And I think part of that was because we were, again, re-establishing norms and expectations for our students, and we were using that discipline, using referrals and suspensions when necessary and appropriate to communicate those expectations with students and families. All right. So I'm now on page six. So what we did to kind of make this manageable, we have lots of different referral types, and I'm talking discipline referrals at this point in time. So we clustered them into groups. This chart just breaks down the different types of clusters. So we kind of clustered similar offenses into one category, so we can make the charts a little bit more manageable and meaningful as we go. We just wanted to make the charts a little bit more functional. We would run off the page if we included every referral type individually as we go. All right, so the first, the next chart is on slide seven. And again, this is a three-year breakdown of major discipline referrals across each level. I'm going to show this, and then I'm going to transition into the next slide, which is the same data, but on a graph. This slide compares the total number of major referrals and number of distinct students. So we're looking at the total number of referrals and the number of distinct students. How many students earned at least one of those referrals? At the elementary level, both the total number of referrals and the number of distinct students earning a major referral are up from this time last school year. That will be a trend that you will see. We've seen elevated numbers at the elementary level and consistent or declining levels at middle and high school. Not to steal the thunder from the presentation, but that's what our data will share, both in discipline referrals as well as suspensions. The total number of major discipline referrals are up by 905 or 21% at the elementary level. The number of distinct students earning at least one discipline referral is up by 81 or 11% at the elementary level. Major discipline referrals at the middle and high school levels are down in both the total number of major referrals and the number of distinct students earning at least one referral. This data will be disaggregated in further upcoming slides. We'll break this down much, a little bit more as we go. The other thing that I wanted to point out as we work through this is, I wanted to show the impact of our targeted resources through compensatory education. That's that $11 million in what you've heard Mr. Neal and I refer to as new money that we received. We deployed a lot of that in some very targeted areas, and a lot of it was targeted towards supporting our students' positive behavior. So I want to be able to point out and highlight, as we work through, you'll see that as a pattern. We'll talk about the level in general and then the impact of comp ed funding, because again, not to steal the excitement at the end, we've seen positive gains in schools when it comes to both the number of major discipline referrals as well as suspensions and a reduction in the schools where we've targeted those compensatory education funds. I'm now on page 10, which is that same slide, just broken down in a visual. And again, as I mentioned, we've targeted about $11 million, just over $11 million in new resources. The total number of major discipline referrals at schools receiving FY24 comp ed funds follows a similar overall pattern to that, that major discipline referrals are up at the elementary level but down at the middle and high school levels. And again, as I said, we have early indicators that these additional resources are having a positive impact, and we're going to talk about what those resources are when we break down this data by level a little bit further. This is just the overview. So the next piece, I wanted to provide a little overview of suspensions and suspension data. As we did with major discipline referrals, we clustered suspension offenses into the categories on this page, just to make the display of data a little bit more efficient as we go. So this is our three-year suspension comparison, and again, this is through February 28th of each school year. Here is this exact data broken down into a chart. And compared to February 28th of the '22-'23 school year, the total number of suspensions and the number of distinct students earning at least one suspension are down across all three levels so far this year. The largest decrease is at the middle school level, where the number of suspensions is down by 103 or 32%, and the number of distinct students is down by 45 or 22%. Suspensions at the elementary level are minimal, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. It's to be noted that there's a prohibition on suspension of students in grades pre-K through second grade. We're going to address that a little bit more as we go in our slide.
Excuse me, Mr. Shokni. When we're looking at that category, physical interaction, staff and students are together in that category?
So I'm going to go back to the slide, and we're talking about the suspension categories. Yes, so those are the physical attack to teacher and staff, and then to student as well. Yes, so those are combined.
You wouldn't want to look at that separately?
We easily, we could separate those. If that's additional data that you'd like, we can definitely separate those out as we go.
Yeah, I think it's important, but.
Okay, and again, the next slide has the total, the three-year suspension comparison for schools receiving targeted compensatory education funding. And again, just another chart where it breaks it down. All right, so now we're going to take a closer look at this at by level. So we're on slide 16. I apologize again for moving quickly. Just want to make sure, give a pause for a moment, make sure everyone's there. All right. So this chart breaks down major discipline referrals by offense, and again, discipline referrals, major referrals as we go. So compared to this time last year, the total number of major discipline referrals at the elementary level is up significantly for out-of-location, physical interaction, threat, and unsafe behavior. Each of these clusters, for each of these clusters, the number of distinct students earning at least one discipline referral is also up significantly. The total number of referrals for disrespect, disruption are relatively unchanged from last school year, but still elevated compared to the '21-'22 school year. The number of distinct students earning a major discipline referral for disrespect, disruption, physical interaction, threat, and unsafe behaviors are also elevated this year compared to last time, this time last year. So that's a lot to see there, but again, I wanted to make sure that we can see the changes that are happening. But again, no doubt about it, our students at the elementary level are experiencing increases, both in the total number of referrals and then the number of distinct students. So we know that it's not the same students struggling. We have more students struggling as we go.
But I will say one thing. It may be five or six in elementary that have a lot that really skew this number, and I just, you know, people need to know that.
Very much so. And again, many of our distinct students might account for one discipline referral within a category, but some of our students might account for a very large number within a category. So the data that we, that we're breaking down here is the same data that our schools work through and have access to as well, and they really disaggregate the data down to the student level. Obviously, they know their students very well and what's happening, but also, you know, we're periodically monitoring the progress as we go. But this, this mirrors anecdotally what we're seeing in schools. We know that our students at the elementary level are struggling, and again, I don't want to get ahead of myself because we're going to talk a little bit more about this in the presentation, and we're being strategic to address that as well, too.
And this trend started before COVID.
Oh, absolutely.
So that's important for everybody to recognize, is that while COVID has a part in what we're seeing now, this trend did start before COVID even started.
It started a long time before that, because as a teacher, for 40 years, you know, you would have one or two, and they would be characters, and you can say probably the same thing, but yes, this was definitely way before COVID.
Yeah, shortly, we're going to circle back to the, to the work done by the Elementary Behavior Task Force, and the recommendations that they made then are still very applicable to our current setting today and are very reflective of our needs, and a lot of the support that, again, that we were able to put in through those compensatory education funds made a big difference, and that's where we're going to segue right into.
Before you do, Mr. Shokni, I do have another question. You mentioned that the school staff members, you know, they know that these are the categories that they're looking at. Do they have any input as far as saying they want additional categories or additional pieces of student referrals looked at?
Sure, it's a great question, Dr. Dorsey. So if anything, and let me clarify, the clusters that we did are for today's presentation. When the schools can run their data, they're looking at by individual offense code, so they can break that down at the granular level to, back to that slide where I started that, you know, I'll go back briefly if you bear with me while I jump back. Like where we, for example, may have combined, like we'll go to the physical interaction piece, we combine those. Staff have the ability to run all of their data through the discipline system based upon those individual suspense, suspension offenses, and same thing with discipline. They don't cluster like this. They're looking at it very individually there.
Okay, even the bullying and harassment, is that broken down as well?
Well, bullying and harassment is one singular offense code.
And just to clarify, suspension codes are set by the state of Maryland. The referral codes are internally developed. Of course, they do mirror the state, but that's where in the referral, you'll notice there are more, there are more offenses for referrals than there are for suspensions. So not just the number of offenses, but the number of opportunities. Unsafe behavior is not a suspendable offense as outlined in the Student Records Manual. That's why when you look at the suspension pieces, we need to make sure that we mirrored the state records manual coding that they have.
Okay, I guess I was just thinking back, and again, Dr. Moore, maybe you can help me with this, but I was thinking back to a recent conversation at our Equity Committee, where, again, if staff members are trying to track students really being respectful of calling each other by their given names only, they're saying that, you know, they don't really have a way of separating that out unless they just do it, you know, paper, pencil, and on their own. And I don't know, am I sort of sharing that the way you understood it as well, Dr. Moore?
Well, students and parents have the ability to use a bullying and harassment form to document any incidents that could be deemed as calling a student out their name, and so they have that information to do that. But as the reporting system, the way that we get all the reports back to us, it's not really teased out by the different categories related on a bullying and harassment form.
Okay, and I think that's what they were getting at at our discussion the other day.
Our reporting system aligns to the state reporting system for bullying and harassment, and those are the, when a person fills out a bullying harassment form, they identify what they believe the behavior that they're being bullied for, and multiple times, there's more than one, right? There's often multiple checkboxes that they'll use. When that's compiled in the state, there, if there's 10 bullying reports, there's often 15 at least, up to 30 indicators of behaviors that led to bullying, because the person might check three or four boxes on a form. So our bullying form aligns the state recording piece, and it does not disaggregate by individual offense. It's numbers of times that bullying reports indicate X as an offense, not the number of individual reports. Does that-
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but I'm just thinking as well, you know, how helpful it would be to sort of say, okay, yes, we're dealing with bullying, or we've dealt with so many incidents of bullying, bullying, and this is how it's broken down. These are the specific areas that we've had to address. I would think that that could be helpful. But I hear what you're saying.
I think I would say that-
I know it's always been aligned to the state recording system as far as the suspensions are concerned.
I think as we deal with each individual occurrence, the administrators that are navigating those are absolutely dealing with them as the occurrence that, you know, often these are filled out by students who are family members, and they indicate multiple pieces. But through that investigation process, which we'll discuss later, they kind of narrow down to what that occurrence is and address that with that individual student that's the offender and the target and discuss it. But to your point of the data collection, we would have to create a different data collection system that is absent or outside of that, of the state, that I don't really think right now we have the resources to create to be able to get to that level from that large of reporting perspective. But from a occurrence perspective, I do absolutely believe that that's something that the administrators navigate. We don't have the ability then to say afterwards that this was the primary precipitating motivation. That's not something that's in the state guidance and the state reporting that we do, which has been a point of discussion. They do review that every five years. We give that feedback, but there's a lot of different pieces that they look at in that reporting.
So where are we in that five-year period? Do you know? Are we close to-
I think in 20, if I remember this right, '22, it's either '21 or '22, we just updated JICK, which is the bullying, so it'll be '27 that the state redoes that work.
Mr. Strecker, do we keep track of what is reported, investigated, and then recorded? Because, I mean, obviously, I mean, if something is reported, then you're going to want to investigate it, so that number would obviously probably be larger than the recorded piece.
Correct.
And that could be for the bullying, the disrespect referrals, et cetera. So I mean, what does that look like as our school system?
There, so disrespect is not, so I'm just really clear, in the, our bullying system, like when people report instances of bullying, those are, that's completely in alignment with what the state's reporting is. While there may be occurrences that, when we investigate or determine not to be bullying or bullying, we know how many of those occurrences happen. We can, we actually believe that's an element of the report, of the X number of reports, here's how many were made, and here's how many were determined not to be bullying. Sometimes there are conflicts, that's disaggregated out on the report that we submit to the State Department each October. But again, it doesn't have any, it's difficult, to Dr. Dorsey's point, it's hard, it's not something we can extrapolate out systemically the way it's designed to have a X number of occurrences or these offenses were the primary.
So like, like here we have referrals for disrespect and disruption was 703. So out of those 703, like obviously, that would be what a teacher would submit to their administrator.
Correct.
So are those, is that, this 703, is this what was found to be recorded, or like-
No, those are the number of students who earned, that's the total number of discipline referrals earned for disrespect and disruption.
So is it possible that the referral number is larger after investigation? It was found that there's something else that occurred?
Very few, so in very few, well, there's, when, when the teacher makes the initial report of a major referral, goes to administrator to process, and this is saving me time later because I'll not have to explain that in that part of the slide. The administrator then does an investigation. There are times a person, a teacher might put in student-to-student conflict, and then after investigation, they recognize that it was actually disrespect instead of a conflict. They make an investigation, they may change the coding of the referral. There are very limited situations where the administrator may, after investigation, recognize that it wasn't appropriate even to be a referral, and then delete the referral, but that's very, very limited. Those are not recorded here. These are referrals that have been processed and recorded for an individual student for the offenses as outlined.
Just from conversations I've had with various teachers, I think it's important that we do have some type of way that teachers can let us know, like, hey, I want to let you know that I did put in a referral for the student, because the things I'm hearing is the referral's disappearing.
So any, any teacher who has a concern about that, when, in the teacher end of putting in a referral, when they enter a minor referral, they actually enter it, they describe it, they name it by its code, this is, it was, it was, those are majors. So I'm trying to think of, like, out of assigned area, as an example, that's, could be a minor referral for out-of-location, maybe out-of-location in the classroom, they talk to the parent, they finalize that, they can communicate to the parent. When they open their dashboard, they will see all the referrals that they entered that they processed themselves, that are minor referrals, as well as any that they entered as major, which just means they put in the baseline information, and then the administrator follows up. So if they've entered, if you have a staff member that asked that question, I entered a referral and it's no longer there, then they would know that because they would see that it wasn't one there. So they only have access, teachers only have access to the referrals that they enter themselves, so one classroom teacher cannot see the referrals that another classroom teacher entered, because we're trying to protect that student's privacy right, but the administrator can see all referrals for any student in their building.
Now, is any of that reported to central office, that so many referrals were-
Deleted?
Yeah.
We have the ability to run that report.
I think that's something important we need to see, because that's something we are hearing, I know I heard a lot of-
Sure.
-from many teachers, you know, they've made complaints, and the complaint's gone.
And when people do delete, we monitor what the reason for that deletion is. Often, like unsubstantiated is a reason that a referral will be deleted, because upon investigation, it was unsubstantiated as to whether or not it did take place. And best practice would be administrators having that conversation with the teacher when they did it, because we know that teachers in the classroom don't have the ability to interview students and gather all that information. They need to address it at, you know, its initial phase and then keep teaching. You know, that's the primary role that they have in that. So, you know, we do have our school directors review that information, they have access to it as well, and when we have areas of concern that show up, we certainly go back and look at those.
I have a question. So under bullying and harassment, or bullying and conflict, do we have specific numbers regarding harassment based on racial discrimination or gender identity? Do we have those statistics?
So we can identify how- So we can identify how many occurrences of gender identity were indicated by the person who filled out the report as an area of concern. We could say, on the bullying reporting system, out of the, I'm making up numbers, 200 bullying reports that came in, 15 of them indicated that gender identity was a concern. However, that doesn't mean it's the only concern or the overwhelming, because when the person fills out that report, they might check five different boxes when they fill out the report.
Thank you.
So before we move on, just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. Dr. McCabe, I appreciated your comments about how this was prevalent before COVID, right? Because we did have the elementary behavioral task force from several years ago, which was prior to COVID, where we found a lot of similar things. But instead of things trending in the direction that we were hoping for, they're going the other way, like, somewhat precipitated by COVID. But obviously, they're not going in the direction we had hoped. But we are seeing a lot of these same trends even before COVID. But one of the things that I also wanted to note was, under physical interaction, I mean, those numbers are frightening at how much they're going up and the number of distinct individuals. Because Marsha, you made the comment about how, you know, in the past, there was maybe one or two characters in the past-
You take three children out of a, out of a school system, and you know what the numbers do sometimes, you know? It's just the way it works.
Well, that's the thing, like, so-
Yes.
Teachers and educators can handle maybe one behavioral issue in a classroom. When it gets to two, then it starts becoming really untenable. And if you get more than two, then it's just not tenable at all. And you're starting to see these, you know, number of distinct students. I mean, if you think about the fact that we have 11,000-ish students at the elementary level? Is that right? 11,000? And you've got 403 of them distinctly are having physical interactions? And that's, that's an alarming percentage.
And what we found was, when students came back from COVID, the physical interactions went, went way up. And one of the reasons for that is that there was really very little social interaction going on at home. There was very little opportunity for very young children to be together and be in an environment where they are with other students and supervised by an adult, so that they could learn those pro-social behaviors that we would like them to learn. So they had an extended period of time of learning, if you will, the wrong behaviors and the wrong way of expressing maybe anger or frustration. And so when we all came back from COVID, we have had to be reteaching those lessons that they would have gotten had we not stayed home during COVID. And it has been much harder than we even, we knew it was going to be difficult when everyone came back, but it has been much harder than we even thought it was going to be. And so that's why you're seeing some of the data that you're seeing.
And have you been following the progressive discipline standards? I mean, because, so it looks like we're having, you know, on average, four-plus incidents per student, per offending student. So clearly, progressive discipline would have to come into play. Has COVID kind of tempered that? Or have we been following the progressive discipline the way that we feel that we should?
We have been following the progressive discipline the way that we should, except for the obstacles and challenges that we'll get to in the presentation.
So you have to remember, in COVID, they were home and no rules and regulations. And when they had to come back to school, they needed to learn to sit in a seat, feet on the floor, walk up and down the hallway in a respectful manner. And this was really difficult, because they did not have any of these rules at all or social interactions with people. And it's been very difficult in these younger grades that they did not get that beginning and continue on. So, and it, you know, parents were frustrated at home, and it was a whole new beginning for these children.
Many of the students that are represented in these numbers at the elementary level did not have a traditional preschool or early elementary experience. So, again, I think we continue to reshape our norms and expectations for what we want from our students. Our expectations are the same, but it's getting our students there. And then the other thing is, again, I'm jumping a whole bunch of slides compounded by, you know, we need, there are a lot of resources that we've trialed through CompEd that are working, behaviorists, mental health therapists, those kinds of things. As we put those in front of students and in schools, we've seen a positive effect on that as we go. We also have a, you know, our workforce, our teachers work very hard, but we have a lot of new teachers who could benefit from some additional training and professional development that maybe some of our veteran teachers have had in previous years. But with them, you know, with our, a lot of our workforce being new, there could be additional, there definitely is a need for additional training, not just for our teachers, but for all of our staff as well.
But I think that's what we've been hearing a lot about, you know, from staff members. Again, with students not knowing how to solve their problems or their conflicts appropriately.
Correct.
Being totally disrespectful to staff members.
Correct.
And, you know, we know we've all come through COVID, but again, you know, we certainly do have to get a handle on that. Because again, I mean, some of the things I've been hearing, it's made me question, you know, this is Carroll County? Because again, you know, some of the behaviors are just very far out there. And again, we've got to get a grip, we've got to get a handle. So hopefully, we're going to be involving, you know, the right persons as we pull together and move forward collaboratively with solving the problem that we have here.
The needs of our students especially, our youngest learners have changed and are evolving. So we're going to get to that as we go. Very briefly, we're going to do this, so at each level, we're going to talk about referrals. We're going to talk about CompEd funding and how we've targeted there, and then suspensions, and we'll repeat that. Dr. Farber, very briefly, could you just give us a quick overview of some of the things that maybe have had on this list of additional supports in schools? We've listed the schools there that are receiving targeted compensatory education funding through the blueprint, and what's working?
Sure, so we have eight schools that have been identified as listed there. Cranberry Station, Elmer Wolf, Robert Moten, Runnymede, Spring Garden, Tawnytown, Westminster, and William Winchester. In these schools, we've added extra supports. So we have a mental health therapist to support at each school. They work with targeted students, works with their student support plans. They work with their behavior intervention plans. They're usually identified through the student support team, can be identified with an IEP 504, but more targeted. The next one would be the full-time behavior support specialist at each school. That's going to be full school. They go into classrooms, they help if there's a crisis, they help to put preventative measures in place. They're available to observe students, to give teachers support, suggestions, strategies, write intervention plans, behavior intervention plans, student support, and strategies. Then we go now down to the full-time school psychologist, which is at the three full-school Title I schools, which is Elmer Wolf, Robert Moten, and Tawnytown. They are working on strategies and plans for students that are, that have special needs, IEPs. So they're going to be more targeted and work around a student's disability. And then, next, we have the additional mentor teachers at each school. They are like a tier-one intervention. They're helping the entire school, but they're going to help our new teachers, teachers that need help with classroom management, making instructional matches in the classroom to lessen frustration among students, so we don't get to some of the behaviors. And then we have additional instructional assistants. Again, they're going to, they're going to provide like one-to-one support. They're helping to keep students within the classroom, so that they can learn and address individual needs as well. Again, they're trying to hit on avoiding frustration for students, so they're successful in the classroom, so we don't develop behaviors. Then we have the-
Before you go on, Dr. Farber. Are those instructional assistants receiving specialized training for this as well?
Some of them have safety careers training, but we have done PDs for them. And then we also have behavior modules on Schoology that's available to all staff. Okay, so then we have additional intervention teachers at schools, at each school. They're a little bit more intense. They're going to, if a student's struggling academically, they might pull them to the side, work with them in order to catch them up to where they need to be. Again, we want to make sure that a student has an educational match, so they're not frustrating, so they're not acting out. Because our younger learners, they don't usually have the vocabulary or the ability to be able to express what they're feeling, and their frustration usually comes out in behavior. So if we can avoid doing that by hitting their needs, then we don't see the behavior. Full-time math resource teachers at each school, they are working with the entire school. They're helping to implement our, our support, our SIT plan. And then they're also helping teams of teachers with strategies in order to implement our curriculum and any specialized strategies that students may need. Then we have one additional assistant principal at Tawnytown. They are there to help to respond to additional behaviors. If there's multi-situations, then we have two administrators that are able to handle the situations within the school. And then we're not interrupting with either IEP meetings or additional data meetings that may be happening as well. And then we have additional pupil, pupil services, PPW worker support. And that's the home connection, the home-school connection. They help to, you know, get that communication between schools. If we need a parent to come to school, if they need a ride to school, if we need to have a meeting, if we need something signed.
Okay, so at each of those schools, they have an additional, I mean, some of them aren't getting everything, like, they're not, not everybody is getting the additional assistant principal. But out of all of those things that you've indicated, it's almost like each school is getting, how many additional staff members here? Because I see mentor teachers, so is that one or two?
So each school has a mentor teacher. Each school has-
Or everyone has one?
Yes. There's two schools that share a mental health therapist. Everybody else has a full-time mental health therapist. The, everyone has a full-time behavior support specialist. Oh, I mean, the eight schools that are listed when I say everyone. Full-time school psychologist is only at the three full-school Title I schools. The mentor teachers are all eight schools. The additional instructional assistants are at all eight schools. Some have two, some have four, depending on where their level are. The additional intervention teachers, each school has two, one at the primary level and one at the intermediate level. And then the full-time math resource teacher, each school has one. And Tawnytown's the only one that has the additional assistant principal. And then each one of them has additional PPW support.
So I guess what I'm kind of struggling connecting the dots here is that, I mean, I, this is great that we're able to provide these additional supports, and at the eight identified schools, and we're saying that, you know, so that was $11 million of CompEd funding, and that it's having a positive impact. But if you look at the number of major referrals, I mean, so these have been in place since the beginning of the year, right? But we've still had a massive increase in the number of instances in the 23-24 school year. So I'm trying to understand, how are we gauging that they've had a positive impact?
I'm going to queue up Mr. Streaker, and our next slide is going to answer just that.
That's a great softball.
Okay. So- Glad I could help.
Just want to, this, this exact slide is, we'll show for elementary, middle, and high. But just to your exact point, Ms. Vingney. So the first three years, the first three bars represent the three consecutive years of the CompEd school. The blue, orange, gray are CompEd 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24. The next three years, the next grouping, yellow, blue, different, blue, of course, and green are the non-CompEd schools. So we subtracted out the data. So when you look at disrespect disruption as an example, you see in the CompEd school a slight decrease, where you see in the non-CompEd schools a slight increase. So while we recognize elementary behavior is on the uptick everywhere, in the non-CompEd schools, we're seeing a small decrease in the behaviors, while we're seeing an increase in the non-CompEd. The out of location, if you look at out of location, you see a slight decrease in the CompEd schools, and you see a tremendous increase in our non-CompEd schools. So overall, we recognize the elementary behavior is in a more challenging state than it, than it was. But it's helping more in the CompEd schools than the schools that don't have that. Physical interaction is another example that, where we're actually seeing a little bit of a decrease in physical interaction in the schools where that CompEd support is identified. We're seeing a tremendous increase in the non-CompEd schools. So, you know, and it's early, and to, like Ms. Herbert had mentioned, you know, one or two, you know, five students in the system, like, you know, this is early, but this is the way we're looking at it to kind of try to make sense of or recognize the investment that we're making in those additional resources in the CompEd schools. Like, unsafe behavior, again, it's up significantly in the CompEd schools, but it's not up as significantly in the non-CompEd schools. So we look at that right now as showing a success, where we put that investment across the board.
And can you, I'm sorry, can you share that out of location category again?
That's a lot of elopement.
So they're not where they're supposed to be, basically?
I'll tell you what out of location is, because I have this queued up, just because I knew this would come up, in a good way. Class cutting, so remember, this is across all levels. We did the same thing. Class cutting, not really an elementary issue. Leaving school without authorization, generally not much of, out of assigned area, which is a lot of where the elopement is, what the elementary referral would be, out of assigned area and tardy to class, which really isn't an elementary issue so much. So in the elementary level, most of those would be out of assigned area. Or leaving school without authorization, which is a different form of elopement when they actually leave the premises, or walk out of the building. So those referrals for those behaviors are in the general cluster of out of location.
Okay. And it's also good to keep in mind, one of the points that I brought up in the introduction, which is, when a student is struggling with behavior, we provide supports for the student, and we provide discipline. We don't provide one or the other. And so in time, we hope that this data gets better, and we don't have to use as much discipline. But right now, as we're, as we're moving these supports in, we want to support the student, but we're not going to just support right now. We're going to have to support with mental health therapists, with behavior specialists, and we're going to have to use discipline right now as well, because we haven't had those supports in place for long enough to be able to pull back on some of that discipline. So it's, it's, it's really, we need both right now for the students that are having these complex issues.
Okay, and our next slide, now we're going to just take a brief look at elementary school suspensions by offense. And as I referenced earlier, the prohibition of suspension of students in grades pre-K through 2 really impacts this data. We can see that most of our areas are redacted, because they are less than, than five in totality. But as, as, as has been the trend for the past three years, the largest number of suspensions at the elementary level has been for physical interaction, and our numbers of suspensions remain constant, relatively consistent with previous years. All right, the next slide is a very, it attempts to summarize the data that's in your appendix, which breaks down major discipline referrals and suspensions by student groups. Those student groups include race and ethnicity, as well as 504, special education, ESOL, which is English speakers of other languages, FARM, students that receive free or reduced meals. Those are the different categories there. So your, your, your appendix will, has all the charts for all of the data previously presented for major discipline referrals and for suspensions. But at the elementary level, it's to be noted that the major referrals is up this year for our African-American, Hispanic, white, special education, and FARMs student groups. The number of distinct students in each of these categories is also relatively consistent with last school year. So again, our numbers are up in those student groups.
And that's pretty alarming, especially, I'm looking at the appendix for 23-24, seeing that the number of distinct students, 67 in a couple of those categories. But yet, the total number-
Pat, what page are you looking at in the appendix?
I'm in the appendix, I guess it's the fourth page in, where it's broken down, major discipline referrals by race, ethnicity. And I'm just looking at the column for 23-24, coming down to the black or African-American- for 23-24, um, coming down to the black or African-American, Hispanic, and then multiple. Looking at that total number there, how high those numbers are. And then also looking at that in conjunction with the number of distinct students.
Yeah, the number of distinct students, um, up slightly, but I, I wouldn't call it a, the, the number of distinct students isn't, it's growing some, but I will say that it's, the student groups are relatively consistent, but, um, definitely, um, are, are struggling more, um, when it comes to the expectations piece. And that is, um, something that we need to work on as we move forward.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the percentage of students-
Significant.
-in the entire system and then looking at these numbers. And it's just not registering appropriately for me.
Yeah. Yeah. And Dr. Dorsey, same is true as we work through, um, with some of our students receiving special education services, um, some of our, our students who receive ESAL services, and then also to our, our students, um, who receive free and reduced meals, um, or maybe, uh, impacted, um, by, uh, or maybe economically disadvantaged. Um, those are all groups that we have to be mindful of, um, as we're, as we're, um, trying to do better.
Mr. Shockney, what's the average grade for this year that's had the most referrals?
I would ha-, I wouldn't, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and check. At the elementary level, I can check and find out and let you know. I don't know off the top of my, can you, do you know that off the top of your head?
If I did, you should be worried.
I know.
Or, or maybe the one you, you've noticed the most of?
I, I wouldn't want to guess.
Yeah. And it could be, it would be different also potentially by school, um, as well. I think that's, that's very important. I mean, our school-based teams, and we're going to, again, I'm just jumping on, it's okay. But our school-based teams work collaboratively to both, you know, prevent problems from happening as best they can and then to respond when events happen. Our schools, through their PBIS teams, um, especially at the elementary level, are, are consistently disaggregating their, their data to find out, all right, what grade level is struggling more, is it a particular area within the building? Um, that's when they can go back and reteach expectations. Our school counselors are wonderful with reinforcing those. Those often become school-wide, um, kind of focal points. So, for example, if we're seeing a lot of referrals in fifth grade in the cafeteria, for example, administrators will strategize, maybe put some additional resources in the cafeteria, maybe figure out why, uh, maybe incentivize those positive behaviors, um, have students working towards goals. Those are good examples of that when those problems arise at different-
And I, I would just say historically, at the elementary school, many of our, um, behavioral challenges are in the lower grades. Um, and we find that, um, it's when they first come to us that we have many of the most struggles. And that as they're with us longer and longer and learn expectations, learn strategies, we're able to support them, they get better. But, you know, and I would say each year, we see more and more students with complex struggles coming to us.
I was gonna say, even with COVID, if, if COVID was part of the mix of this, like the current fourth graders, they would have been in kindergarten when COVID hit. So, I mean, if there was a major behavior issue at that point, it could, you can be like, okay, well, it's obviously the interaction they lost. You know, they lost how to have those relationships with their peers pre-K. You know, they're in third grade now, so, I mean, that could even be, some, again, that, that they lost completely all of that that they needed for that growth. So I think, but I think it would be good to kind of see, like, just maybe an average.
Sure. We can run that data for you.
Plus, I'm thinking as well, I mean, it's just important for, um, students to feel connected and to feel that, you know, they're cared for. Somebody does appreciate them and care for them for who they are, so to speak. So hopefully, as we're planning, um, you know, the training, we can certainly get into, you know, making connections with students.
Yep. You will see later on, Dr. Dorsey, the first word in a slide about that is relationships. Um, and our relationships with our students make all the difference. Um, you know, when we have good relationships, we, um, you know, we can work through things. Um, and, and again, we can work through things when there's a challenge as well. Um, but that, that foundation of a good classroom, um, good classroom management, that concept of a classroom community is all based upon good relationships, um, with students with each other, students with staff, and staff with students. It's very reciprocal as we go.
Do we have data, I was gonna say, do we have data on what elementary school right now seems to be, or like the top five elementary schools we're seeing the most issues at?
I, I have, I did not run the data by elementary school. I, I wanted to look at the data as a whole, and I didn't want it to be identifiable as well, too. Because as we disaggregate and through some of the student groups, the data becomes identifiable pretty quickly as well, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Tara, I was, I was looking at the, so page five on, in the appendix, and there's some really good information in here. I mean, if you look at the, the FARM students, that there were, you know, 20, 2,380 incidents from FARM students, but FARM students only make up less than 20% of our population, right? But they had more, more referrals, more referrals than, major referrals than the non-FARM students, you know, which make up more than 80% of our population, right? So, I mean, it's very concentrated in the FARMs population. And also, if you look at the IEP, there's, there's more than 10, that's probably close to 15. Um, so if you look at the number of incidents, the 2786 versus number of distinct students, that's like 15 instances per student. Um, so it's, it's very concentrated in-
It's concentrated, but then I wonder about the intersectionality of, of all of this disaggregated, um, pieces here.
Yes. We're, we're giving you a kind of a big overview, but this is work that happens every day in our schools on a regular basis, um, where those, again, the school-based teams are looking at how are their students doing and what they're doing, what, what they can do differently, um, to be able to, to adapt. Um, as we transition into middle and high school, the trends there are a little bit different. Um, we're, at the middle and high school level, generally speaking, we've seen reductions in the number of students and the distinct number of major discipline referrals and the number of distinct students. Now, there, there are exceptions to that, and there's work to be done at the middle and high school level as well also. Um, but I'll, I'll hit briefly, um, on some of the middle school pieces as we go. Um, the next slide there, um, our middle schools have experienced a significant reduction in the total number of major discipline referrals, um, in the categories of, or the clusters, excuse me, of disrespect, disruption, out of location, physical interaction, substances, substances, technology violation, threat, and unsafe behaviors. The number of distinct students earning at least one discipline referral in each of these clusters is also down compared to this time last year. Um, and again, I, I will say, we, as we, we had a little trend coming up, uh, we had the pand-, pandemic, but we are trending down, which is evidence that, um, we are, um, being more consistent with our expectations and holding students, um, and helping students meet those expectations, um, at the middle and high school levels. There are still student groups and particular areas where we can do better. And even, even because there's a reduction, if you look at some of the, the total numbers, um, you know, even though there's a reduction in disrespect and disruption, that's great, but that's still a very elevated number of, of referrals. Um, so we need to be mindful of that, too, um, as we work.
And then again, looking at the middle school, um, major discipline referrals by race, ethnicity, similar trend.
Significant, yes.
So I question, you know, why the data is looking like this.
All right. Um, compensatory education funding at the middle school level, you'll see a lot of trends compared to the elementary level. I won't work through all of those, but what we, again, our early indicators and, and, and the feedback, and again, the intent of these compensatory education resources, obviously, we want to address behavior, but it's all about achievement as well, too. Um, when, 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 when a student obviously is, is behaving as we would expect, um, they're available for learning, they're going to learn more. Um, but a couple of key things, there's mental health therapists, um, those are social workers, um, typically by trade, um, and they do tremendous work, both on the preventative side as well as on the response side as well, too. And I'll, I'll segue into that a little bit more as we go. Um, those mentors, uh, working with our staff. And the other thing is too, our mentor, like the mentor behavior coach, they're there to support our new staff, but a, a teacher who might be a veteran, might have a student who's struggling in their room and might need some help and resources. And there's nothing wrong with leaning on a colleague to say, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling to reach this student, or I'm struggling to get this student engaged, or I'm struggling to get this student, you know, ready to learn. Give me some strategies and work through that. And, and a lot of times, teachers will do that with each others, uh, each other as well. Um, the other thing that's a little bit different at the middle school level compared to the elementary level is what we're referring to as the personalized learning envelop, environment, or PLI. Um, and that's an academic intervention, but sometimes some of the students who participate at that need behavioral supports as well, too. But these are, are small, structured classrooms, um, where we're able to provide some additional resources and support. It is the same curriculum, it is the same content, it is the same teaching, but the environment's a little bit more student-specific. Um, and we're able to meet some needs. And our early indicators is that's being very successful, both here at the middle school level, um, and at the high school level as well also.
So do we see that continuing, um, for next year?
I do see that continuing for, for next year. I think with anything, we need to continue to refine it, uh, to, to make it, you know, truly about, um, progress and, and achievement. Um, it's not a place where students go if they cannot be successful. We, students are there to be successful, so we can get students back into that, uh, into that classroom environment. And again, that, that is not a, is not a special education intervention. This is a general ed intervention, um, that we're doing in, in, in both places.
And I must say that I did visit the one at East Middle. I had been invited to visit that, um, particular classroom. And, you know, the staff members are, are working extremely hard and very well, um, with the students who are placed there.
Lots of focus where we need to continue to grow is on the transition. Um, because again, a student, you know, might come in, spend a part of the semester working or most of the semester working, uh, in that PL, um, PLE, or PLI, excuse me, um, and, or PLE, excuse me, that's a typo, goodness. And I even caught myself in the typo. Well, thank you.
I won't go say anything.
That's all right. Thanks. Guys can jump in when I do those things. Um, we're all human. Um, but, but again, we're seeing good, good success there as well. At the middle school, we've expanded our, our partnerships, especially with, uh, Boys and Girls Clubs, a great example of that. We have Boys and Girls Clubs at the middle school level happening, um, in our schools, but also soon to be happening at the new, uh, Boys and Girls Club, uh, at North Carroll as well, too. So tremendous opportunities, um, as well there. And then some summer transition programs, um, getting students, and the high school does this as well, not to steal Mr. King's thunder as well, but, um, getting students in the building, getting the students acclimated early, getting a face that they know that they can go to for support and help. Um, because again, as we're trying to, to improve our student behavior, there are two parts to it. Obviously, it's, it, you know, we always want to respond when a student doesn't meet an expectation through discipline. There's also a lot of preventative work. We have to teach what we expect in our students. When our students struggle in reading, um, we teach them, you know, we provide intervention and support to build their, their capacities. Same thing is, is true when it comes to, uh, comes to behavior as well.
I just had a question. Um, I noticed there's nothing up there about Crossroads or Gateway. Are these numbers reflective of any referrals there?
Correct. It's inclusive.
And, and any comp ed funding helping out those schools as well?
Not, not now, um, but, but potentially down by the, down the road, um, as we go. But these are, um, these are what we determined as targeted compensatory education. All schools under the blueprint receive compensatory education funding, but these are the, the schools that we've identified, the schools that we targeted with that 11 million dollars.
Thanks. We did add one, um, behavior support specialist to Gateway Crossroads through compensatory education. We did not pull them out of the comp ed data because Gateway Crossroads, we spend a disproportionate amount of resource relative to where already. So while that one support is, is certainly helping a lot, Mr. West will share all the time, don't take Cam away from me. Um, I will share that from a, from us comparing like this, this data here, we didn't pull Gateway Crossroads out of that, because we really wanted to look at the, the comprehensive schools to comp, like what that change would be.
And then one more question. I know it's not talked about here at all, but sometimes some of these students prefer to, um, home and hospital care? Any kind of resources allocated for those folks, or is it just strictly academics for home and hospital?
Home and hospitals, prim, is, from our perspective, it's the, students have their educational, their academic needs, as well as, uh, if they have an IEP, there's an IEP meeting, um, before they go on home, or as they go on home and hospital to discuss what services they need. So they still get, um, their special education services that they need while they're on home and hospital to the extent.
So not necessarily any mental health services or anything like that for home and hospital?
No, we do not provide them mental health services unless it's in an IEP. Sometimes there are students that do. Um, but we do have students that are out with, um, there's two aspects, and there's a health and then a mental health, home and hospital application. Um, but they have to have a treatment provider. That's, that's providing a different level of service than what we would provide in school.
Thank you so much.
We stay very connected with those students, you know, in both instances, in anticipation of that transition back as well.
Yeah, and there's a direct transition plan for this. It's required by law, to be honest, and we, we do it very specifically.
Thank you.
This is the slide, um, just for middle schools, again, where that, to articulate the comp, uh, the compensatory education impact. Mr. Streaker, anything you want to add to that?
Just if you want to look at, like disrespect disruption, again, look at the significant decrease from orange to gray. Um, it is also a decrease from the blue to green with the comprehensive schools. So it's, they're going down in both areas, but we note, you know, just as we were looking at this, that we, we are seeing that in the comp ed world, that the decrease is happening, um, in many areas to a large, to a large extent. So, um, it's early, but I do think it's good preliminary information that we're finding that that investment is, is paying dividends, at least from the, the behavioral aspect of, as of now.
Mr. Shockney, do you have a general split of the 11 million of how much of that is spent at elementary versus middle versus high?
I do. I just, I, I can provide that. I, I have that in a chart, um, but I just don't have it committed to memory, but I can get that to you. All right. All right. The next slide, um, is, um, excuse me, are suspensions by offense at the middle school level. Um, the total number of suspensions, suspensions at the middle school level have decreased from last year in the following clusters, disrespect and disruption, physical interaction, substances and threat. While suspensions for disrespect and disruption and physical interactions are still elevated, they're each at a three-year low. But obviously, areas of focal, you know, focus for us, um, as they are elevated. The next attempt to summarize the, the student group data, I will tell you that there is a typo under major discipline referrals. The increase, that third kind of sub-bullet down is incorrect. Um, it should read increase in total number for our Asian, Hispanic, and ESAL student groups. I apologize for the, for the mistake there. Um, but as we talked about before, this is the, the breakdown. Um, the, the data can be found in your, um, appendix, um, for each of the student groups. And again, race and ethnicity, as well as all the other additional student groups, 504, special education, ESAL, and FARMs. Okay, next one, uh, high school. Again, similar trends to, to middle school as well. At the high school level, the total number of major discipline referrals are down slightly for disre, disrespect, disruption. I've done that a couple of times now. Um, out of location, physical interaction, and substances. Major discipline referrals for bullying conflict, however, are up slightly. The most significant number of major disciplined referrals at the high school level continues to be disrespect, uh, disruption, followed by out Mr. King, you want to hit just a brief highlights, um, of what we're doing at, uh, the high school level when it comes to our compensatory education funding?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, just to give you a sense of what this actually looks like, because the high school, obviously, you change classes. The PLEs are targeted, uh, we have targeted the core content areas, so we have teachers in the four major areas. The students are in one or two rooms for most of their day, they still head to other classes for specials. Um, and as has been said numerous times, the key is we hand-pick the staff that were part of that. The relationships they built with the students have been outstanding. They've given the students the support they need with the staff and other resources. And, and as Mr. Shockney mentioned, and we started the bootcamps at, at those two schools before we had the comp ed money, so the principals were very happy to receive it. And that really sets the tone for those freshmen, uh, to get prepared for the school year. And they've had a lot of success getting them off to that start. And Wednesday, I'm having, um, Ms. Mobley and Mr. Brown present, um, to the rest of the principals who aren't as familiar. And what they're going to share is some of the data on how the kids that transitioned out are doing. And what they both told me is very well, but I don't have data yet to back that up. But most of the students that started first semester have transitioned out into four, you know, classes with their peers, which is the goal, you know, from the beginning. So, I mean, I can honestly tell you that the PLE process has been one of the most successful things I've been part of in my career. And I have other principals chomping at the bit who would like to develop something similar when possible at their schools. So, um, but it, they're, they're, we're giving the students what they truly need in a gateway-like scenario in their home school. They still participate in all their activities at the home school that are available to the other students. And it's just the support and the personalized, uh, ability to present the same curriculum, the same instruction, but in a way that really works for those kids.
Do you know about how many students are in each of those classes?
Uh, yes. By, I mean, things change sometimes quickly, uh, because some of these students are a, a little transient, but 30 to 39 students, net, 39 is the max we've had in the program at any one time, and 30 is the minimum we've had. any one time, and 30 is the minimum we've had.
All right, our next slide again is the, is an attempt to show that impact of those comped resources.
Just a couple of things to note. First of all, we only have two of our seven high schools are compeds. So you'll notice that the comped, first three bars are lower just trend-wise, but just remember it's only two of our seven schools. So it represents less of our student population. In the elementary, you'll see there, like, the comped schools were higher than middle. They were higher as well as half the middle school. So just a note to begin with. But disrespect disruption, again, a significant decline. And a lot of those students that may have struggled in their general classroom, you know, as far as making that, using that PLE successfully to start out and build those relationships and hopefully get them on track academically, will decrease those pieces as we move forward. Again, to recognize this is through February 28th, so those students were, if they were in PLE first semester, for the most part, they were only in, they, as of February 28th, they had about a month in the comprehensive aspect. But we can, we certainly see a significant increase there. Out of location as well. And sometimes, these are some of the same students, sometimes they're not. But where we've put some resource, we can see that there are positive trends, the way they impact, at least through this data.
I had a question about the substances piece. Anecdotally, can you tell me the types of substances that you've seen?
Sure. What they're, I mean, primarily, it's THC and tobacco. And the hard part, probably the most challenging, we have to differentiate between the two is we don't know which one it is. We know it's mood-altering when the student's demonstrating effect of it, or when the cartridge or the label is clearly labeled. But the reason we group substances as a collective, that includes, as the cluster demonstrates, tobacco, all drugs and alcohol. So we don't have as much alcohol in schools anymore, but the biggest trend is the vaping piece, Mr. Whistler. And, you know, we know that with that legalization, there's a kind of a trend and a belief among some students and some families, to be very honest, that believe that it's legal now. And it's not for students. It's not if you're under 21. It's not if you're outside your house. But if you travel around, you might notice that maybe not everybody understands that.
I know. I'm very interested in getting a report on just, you know, the breakdown, tobacco, THC, whatever. I'm very interested to see whether or not recent actions at the state level are affecting us in our schools. And I know there's a huge debate across the street with our commissioners as to whether or not they should take action. But I just wanted to try to keep a pulse on it to see if it's a problem in our school system.
We can break down the data for you and give it to you. The challenge that I would, I can already tell you is it's hard to differentiate. So when we're not sure, it's tobacco. I mean, because we know we have something. But we have a lot more unsure than we used to because just the way things are labeled and the creativity that students are demonstrating.
Yeah, I've actually heard from a lot of students, my own kids included, but a lot of their friends and other parents, that vaping and smoking in the school bathrooms is such a problem that kids are literally afraid to use the bathroom in the high schools during the school day because they're afraid of getting caught up in, like, okay, if I go in there and a teacher comes in, like, there's vaping and smoking going on at all times. And so the kids are afraid to go in there, that they happen to be in there at a time that an administrator walks in and takes action, right? Like, it's, it's really a problem.
Thank you. All right. Next slide has our high school suspensions by offense. And again, as we did, as we saw at the middle school level, we have some reductions, but we still have elevated clusters as well. The following slide is the high school student group data summary. The total number of major discipline referrals is up for the African-American and multiple race student groups. Major discipline referrals, however, are down for the Hispanic student group. The 504, special education, ESOL and FARM student groups all saw reductions in the total number of discipline referrals. And the total number of suspensions are down significantly for the Hispanic, multiple races and white student groups.
And again, those numbers are evident when we look in the appendix at that breakdown. And again, very concerning.
Agreed, Dr. Dorsey. Okay, so now we're kind of going to transition out of the data and talk about a couple of things, and many of things we've already covered. So team members, if we've covered a topic, feel free to move quickly through this. But a couple of acknowledgements I just wanted to make as we start to break down the data. We've already started to talk about the whys and the next steps, which is what kind of this next portion of it is. But given this group was quick to pick up on a few things, but no doubt about it, the pandemic has and continues to have an impact on our students, especially our youngest of students as well. I alluded to earlier, we have a lot of new staff. We have some non-certificated staff who are still learning the ropes of becoming a teacher. And those folks need support. And we need to make sure that we have ongoing, not just one time, but ongoing staff training and resources. That includes time and people and the tools that folks need to be able to do that. So one thing I wanted to hit. The other thing, and this is just a, whenever I have the opportunity to talk about behavior, I put my old hat back on. I wanted, I always want to hit on a few things. But the key to any good classroom management is our relationships. We hit on that earlier. And then any behaviorist would tell you that, you know, all behavior serves a function. So we need to look at what is the function behind that behavior? That student is attempting to tell us something, and sometimes very clearly. But with our youngest of students and with our students with disabilities, it's often difficult to work through that. But we have tools. We have the abilities to do an analysis of behavior that breaks it down and determines functions. And then we can address those functions to help reshape. As we went, we talked a lot about some of the preventative strategies that we have placed, as well as response strategies. We have to have both. Discipline is a key piece of this. As Dr. McCabe said early on, we don't do one thing instead of discipline. Discipline exists. Discipline will continue to exist. But we also have to make sure that we are working to be preventative as well as respond appropriately. We need to have interventions. We need to have plans. They can be formal, they can be informal. We need to be able to work through when we have problems arise. We want to also address problems when they're small before they become bigger. It's much easier to solve a small problem, obviously, than it is a bigger problem as well. We have to collaborate with each other, with our teams within schools and across all those resources. While we do have limited resources, but we do have resources at the same time. So make sure that we're engaging with our folks within our buildings to problem-solve and work carefully with each other. And as Dr. McCabe said, discipline will continue to be a key part of how we help shape behavior.
And again, as a part of that ongoing collaboration, that is with the teaching staff as well, right?
Yes, ma'am. Most definitely. Our teachers work very hard within their departments and in their teams to address, you know, what's working and what's not working within their building, but most definitely. So I just put a little, a slide in here for anyone who may not be aware, or any citizen or family member who's watching. Obviously, we want to address behavior through a multi-tiered system of support, or systems of support, or an MTSS, which has levels or layers of intervention. You've heard of tiers before. This is the PBIS pyramid, which is applicable for lots of different things. Behavioral intervention could be one. Academic supports could be another. But universally, you have tiers of supports. And the green, you can see the word "all" that's there. Those are strategies typically universal, preventative, that respond, that all students can access. But sometimes, students who struggle need a little bit of extra support or guidance. That's where that yellow zone comes into play. And then a very few, very small number or percentage of students need very intensive supports and interventions. And again, this is just a model that you can apply across areas. But again, it's also a model that our schools do use when breaking down behaviors. And again, a big connection to what's happening in our schools. PBIS is a great example at the elementary level.
And are all of the elementary, I think I may have asked that before, but all elementary schools have PBIS?
Yes.
Yes.
They're all using it? Okay.
But a great opportunity, and Dr. McCabe and I have seen this out on our school visits this year, we have some schools who have taken kind of a, let's revisit and refocus our efforts around PBIS. Maybe it's been some time since we've implemented a strategy or implemented the program. Staff has turned over. It's a great opportunity to go through. There's a matrix of expectations that happen across different places. I've seen those revised. And then that's a lot, how they target and progress, monitor how kids are doing. And lots of positive reinforcements and incentives built in for students who are meeting the expectations. That's a great, great strategy as well also.
One concern, sorry, one concern I heard from some elementary teachers that, you know, their schools do the PBIS was they may have, you know, a couple of students that will act out extremely, will be removed from the room, but yet they're rewarded if they were good for five minutes. And they start, like, oh, if I do this, I'll constantly get a cookie. Or if I do this, I constantly get more coupons. That was something that I heard a lot of from elementary teachers, is that that's something that they're seeing as a concern. And unfortunately, then, it trickles into the rest of the students where they see this. Oh, well, that kid acts out, they get rewarded. So I'm going to act out, so I get rewarded. And it seems like, yeah.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I understand completely what you're saying. Many of our students have individualized behavior plans or behavior intervention plans, very specific plans. And that may be a differentiated approach for that student to build some capacity. Typically, that's coupled around some services or specialized intervention that might go along with that. But I think that's the delicate piece in how we work through those situations with students to help them understand, obviously, this might be something that we're doing for a particular student. But yet, we want it to work within the confines of that structure. But we, it can look different for different kids. And sometimes, all the students can participate from the behavior modification. It works for, works for everyone. And although we might be targeting, you know, one student in particular, but I think in that kind of example, we could probably do a little better job of maybe layering some resources or supports, maybe bringing in the school counselor or the school psychologist or a behavior specialist to maybe work and fine-tune in that situation. So we're not sending a mixed message to other students.
Yeah, because that was one of the concerns I kept hearing from a lot of the elementary teachers, is it sends that wrong message to the other kids.
I heard similar comments from a lot of folks and just trying to understand, you know, and Dr. McCabe, I understand the comment you made earlier that, like, we provide supports and discipline, like, in these situations. But it almost feels like maybe the discipline isn't commensurate, I guess, with some of the actions, you know? Part of the problem is, like, there's just not, seems like a lot of these kids, like the ones that are the repeat offenders who have this significant behavioral problems, that there's not necessarily enough structure or enough discipline for those kids. It's like, they need to understand that there are repercussions, that it's not just that supports get put in place, but there have to be repercussions. Like, the discipline is a very necessary part of that.
Absolutely.
So just want to make sure that, you know, the discipline is part of it, right? Not that it's just the supports and the reward.
Yes. And we, and, you know, I think we are very proud as a district that we look at both all the time. We don't, we, you know, we aren't a system that just does positive or supportive approaches. We do them in relationship with appropriate discipline, you know, which is not as popular today.
But very structured behavioral intervention plans can work, but they have to be written well, they have to be implemented well, evaluated and so forth. And that's, when we're at that level of support, typically, we have multiple other professionals working to support that student when those things happen. So, but then, food is, food is never the best reinforcer, to be honest with you. So there's definitely some, some work that we can be doing in some particular areas. But that's the, the last thing we want is to send a mixed message to students.
And oftentimes, in those situations, we make sure that if a student is being rewarded because of a behavior intervention plan that requires that, that it's done in a setting that other students don't necessarily witness.
And that's something, that's something different than I heard, though.
Yeah. And that's something that we can work on.
Sure. Mr. Ward, anything you want to hit on, anything else on the preventative strategies?
Sure. Just quickly, I think, you know, really preventative strategy starts before the school year begins. It's really about those articulation meetings, scheduling. It's about the planning with teachers to ensure that they have the right resources and supports for those students. Then throughout the year, we've talked a lot about these, but it's really about consistent reinforcement of positive behavior, ensuring that we have the counseling that's needed for those students that's already identified, ensuring that our programs are in place, like PBIS, second step, and sources of strength. And then it's that consistent and effective classroom management and modeling.
Is there assistant, like, additional supports for after-school hours? Meaning, is there check-ins potentially with family? Because family support for these students is a huge component. And unfortunately, we do have families who do not help support their child outside of school. So are there, what are, how do we use those resources to follow up with after-hours?
Sure. So we always will, we will always engage with the family who wants to learn and grow. We have lots of resources available for families in this particular area. Our staff will engage with them. Oftentimes, our school counselors, our school psychologists, as they're working with the family. Obviously, we want clear lines of communication so the family knows what we're doing at school. And often at times, the family is working at home to reinforce the same type of desired behavior. So, yeah, so we share resources. We also get parents connected with our community partners, Youth Services Bureau, other resources that exist. I don't want to, Mr. Streaker, if there's anything I'm missing, feel free to jump in and share there.
Judy Center, potentially.
Correctly. Potomac Case Management, Advanced Behavioral Health. We have different partnerships with different community organizations that work with our, with our families. And a lot of it is in cooperation with the health department and the local management board. We have families that go through the local care team, so, and we have school representation on those, all of those types of interventions, as we're meeting with families. For those tier, you know, the tier three, like Mr. Shokni said, there's the red zone, families that are having challenges navigating, a lot of grandparents, you know, and there's supports in the county for resources for grandparents who are parents, like, you know, are parenting. So different information that we try to share with families as well.
And I think that's important for the community to know, too. That it's not just, okay, they're here for, you know, from nine to three and go home and we don't do anything else. It's, there's other avenues that are involved. From the time the child wakes up to comes to school, they go home to the time they go to bed, that the community is involved a lot in trying to make sure the student has what they need.
It's a lot of the work of the people personnel workers, linking the liaison between the school system and community partners, as well as our mental health therapists. Social workers do a lot of that same kind of work. So in large part, those are the two biggest areas where that work happens. But it is a challenge. It's a challenge for those families to access. Transportation is a tremendous barrier for a lot of the families to access the resources, you know, that might exist, that they want the help, but getting there is tough. And, you know, and we do have a limited transportation aspect for folks to get anywhere here that might not have a car or other means. So that's a significant barrier for a lot of our families, particularly our financially-challenged families. And I think you see that data reflected in the behavior and things like that, that we're trying to support those kids.
So at the blueprint, we have the two schools, I believe, that are identified as community schools, correct?
Yes, right now, Crossroads and Tawny Town.
So those, those will receive a lot of resources as well?
Crossroads won't, because as quickly as they've become eligible, they've lost eligibility. However, Tawny Town is in a much different place. So Tawny Town's a great example of the wraparounds, communities, resources that will, that will, that will happen in time. So next year, at Tawny Town, we will hire a community schools coordinator who will spend the year doing a needs assessment throughout the course of the year and then identify what is it that the, that that community would like to have through that grant. And that's truly a grant. There's no, you know, locally, we're not required to match or find funding for that. So the needs assessment will happen next school year, and the following school year we'll begin to implement some of those resources as we go. So stay tuned, but that will be a great example of wraparound services in a school community. And the, you know, that, and Tawny Town's a great location for that. There'll be a lot of folks who'll be able to access that because it'll be close by to home, which is the whole spirit of that. So that, that fits the definition of a community school much better. Crossroads, don't get me wrong, there's definitely a need. We would love to be able to put some resources there, but that's a regionalized structure to We would love to be able to put some resources there, but that's a, a regionalized structure to that program. And when students go home, they go back to, you know, all, all across Carroll. So it's a little bit harder to access those. But when those resources are in a, in a, in a neighborhood or community school, it makes it even, even better, more efficient.
And is that structured, that year for the community or for the staff member to, to work on that needs assessment? I mean, in one sense, it seems like a long time, a year to complete the-
It is.
Needs assessment.
It's the mechanism of the funding as well. So there is a state template and so it, it's not that we'll be loosely planning differently in Carroll than other, other systems who've already are further down the road in this process. But it's a mechanism of the funding as well. Dr. Dorsey said the way the blueprint, that part of the blueprint works is in year one, you get the funding to hire the-
Right, I saw that.
Coordinator to do the assessment based on the state template. The, the second part of the grant doesn't show up until the subsequent year to pay for the, the services, the resources.
So is the template sort of broken down by month, what you do or?
It's not necessarily in a, on a timeline, but by category. So a lot of the wraparound services are driven at medical services as well. Dental services and other medical services as well as mental health and, and other supports. And then it's not, we may be underselling it by just calling it, you know, just a needs assessment because then it's also, can you, okay, can you then identify where are the resources to link up and work on planning, planning that connection for the subsequent year, you know, who, who would be the dental-
Partnering will be a big part of that.
Yeah.
Starting to establish partner, expanded partnerships.
And developing contracts with, with agencies as we know of funding.
So that it's geared up to go that next summer.
Okay, if the school still qualifies, right?
We don't, we feel pretty sure that Tawny Town will sustain forever really or for a long-
But like with Crossroads, I mean, we had the person there for a year already or were we planning to get them or where were we?
We are in the process of, of, of hiring for, for that position as it stands.
But then if they're not really going to be identified, that makes two years.
So we, we spent a, a large part of the year in, in good dialogue and discussion, but it is a requirement. So we're going to, we'll conduct, we'll conduct a needs, it's much smaller number of students. So we'll be able to, to still continue to, this year before the year's out. There's a required report that's due at the end of May. We'll still be able to, to, to do an ample needs assessment. The difficult pieces, I don't see us, and, and that's the, was the pro, that was the, the genesis for the discussion is we didn't see this continuing and it, and it's not continuing. So, but again, it is such a small number of students. But, but we're also looking at, you know, how we structure that. The school will still continue to function, but behind the scenes, you know, right now we have Crossroads and Gateway separated. Behind the scenes changes nothing for kids and how this all works. We have them categorized as two separate schools and probably should have them categorized as one. But we're, we're, I don't anticipate in the future that that's going to be a, that we'll be revisiting it.
And you tried to make that argument earlier.
I try, we try, we try. I'm going to move quickly through, again, just a few more preventative strategies that exist. I know Dr. Farver, Mr. King, you were going to hit on this. But obviously, we know that we need to continue to provide ongoing professional learning, support for parents. That is going to be a recommendation that we expand our supports for families and that we continue to engage with our community partners. We do a lot with our, our, our local folks and we'll continue to do that. Because again, a lot of opportunities to keep kids engaged, especially after school, is, is a big piece of that. And then some response strategies as well too, because we talked about obviously the, the importance of both. Again, in addition to discipline, we will utilize things like mediation, counseling. Community conferencing is a good opportunity, we've had great success with that. Where if there's a disagreement, whether it's in school or in the community, we can bring in a facility, we can refer families to a facilitator to attempt to, to come to a resolution. We utilize restorative approaches, again, in addition to discipline, not in lieu of. And then that collaborative, collaborative problem solving at the team and school levels, you've seen that echoed. But that is a very much a, a, a key component to the response side of things. Mr. Streaker, I know we've hit a lot, on a lot of this as we go, do you want to summarize the next couple of slides for us?
Sure, this is taking, I'm not going to read it to you, I promise. This is taken directly from the CCPS Code of Conduct that we share publicly. The general goal, like Dr. McCabe said, is to teach students to be positive contributing members of society. That's the goal of discipline. It's to teach and support. We use a lot of preventive strategies to try to accomplish that. From a progressive discipline slide, it just kind of, you know, put in order at some level. Not that you have to go directly in order to, because depending upon the offense, we might start at a higher level. Two things to point out here is, again, relationship, relationship, relationship is where it starts. And it begins in the classroom and the school in general. That student engagement is to make sure we're talking to the student, talking to the parent. You know, as we get more difficult situations, I think one of the pieces in our professional learning that we need to really remind our staff is to engage that family. A lot of times, people don't want to pick up the phone and engage and our families aren't always receptive to that engagement. So as a group working together, if we could really get to the point of like, let's work this out and hear that we're not, you know, if a teacher's calling you at five o'clock, they have better things to do. They're calling you to get your help to, to address a behavior. But that's certainly something that we could do a better job of. I also want to note, because there's always a lot of folks out there, they really want us to use the three strikes and you're out or A, B, C, done. It is illegal to do that. So that note at the bottom is just to clarify, the law specifically says that we're required to allow for discretion when we're imposing discipline. So we can't say on step one, this happens, step two, this happens, step three. We have a continuum of progressive discipline. And our regulations will say things like up to, up to, the list, that there's a lot of different things that can happen along the way.
And as you were talking about, you know, how sometimes it's really hard to get the phone calls with the negative messages. I know there were schools in the past that said, okay, we're going to make sure that we're putting in so many positive phone calls.
There's a lot of that, Dr. Dorsey, a lot of that.
Yeah, just sharing the good things kids are doing.
And that's for two things, right? One, to reward the student, to, to let the parent know, and two, it's relationship.
Right.
So that if you would need to call later, you've already established that you're coming from this from a position of support and care for the child and you've established that positive relationship. So those, those communications are very important on both ends. The discipline system, just, I think I kind of already covered this, what the difference between a major referral and a minor referral and as, what the teachers do, so I think I covered that earlier. I, I don't think I need to share that again.
Okay, but as a part of that process, can you share when there has been a referral, it's gone to the office level? The student is at the office level. So how does the child transition back to the classroom? What does that look like now?
I mean, how they, I mean, I guess, so I guess the first thing is with the, the administrator conducts an investigation and, and levies discipline, makes a decision of what that is. Depending upon the level and depending upon the students, it's, it's always best practice to communicate back with the teacher before just sending the kid. We shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't have a student that's sent out of a classroom and then communication doesn't happen back with that teacher. Now, again, like I explained, the teacher can always see the result or how the administrator processed that discipline. Because the referral that they wrote, if they're the writing teacher, they have that on their platform when they open the discipline system. So they'll see that student's referral, they'll see actions taken and whatnot. But again, good communication is to, to reach out and call or maybe escort the student-
Right.
At different levels, down the hall and talk to the teacher.
Because contractually, isn't that where we are?
Yeah, well, that was passed, that was a law passed in early 2000s about that requirement if a student left. I forget exactly, but there's a, that communication with, with the staff member. If a student, if they sent a student out, that the teacher needs to be notified of prior to them coming. They might not agree with the discipline, but they need to be informed.
Mm-hmm. The student is returned.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, can you explain the process? Like what is the, like the process and time at which you finally go, okay, this student needs help. This student needs a one-on-one, this student needs an IEP. Like what is the process in that? Does, is there numerous referrals or there's numerous disciplinary things? And then at that point, it's like, okay, you talk to mom and dad?
They're individualized, I mean, to be, they're, each case is different. Some students progress through that more rapidly because of age, the type of behavior, all those things factor in.
Sure.
Just spectacularly, so there's not a specific like systemic across the board. The, you know, it's this quickly, these steps have to be checked. A lot of it depends upon the age of the student. You know, the younger they are, the more intervention we try to, you know, do early on. Because some of these students, it's the first exposure they've had to school. So we want to make sure we don't over-identify students as we work through the process.
Ms. Wood, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but, but there are 14 disability codes in, in the area of special education. For us to go down the road of special education, we have to suspect a disability. So we have to suspect that a student may meet criteria in one of those areas. And when we do that, whether we initiate a meeting or a family initiates a, a meeting, we start off with a screening committee. And at that screening committee, we begin the, the process of, of reviewing data to determine if we suspect a disability. And then there's lots of procedural steps and things that start from, from there. But it's, if a student is, is struggling, every stu, it's a, it's a very individualized piece. It'd be hard to say because of X number of referrals or at this point in time, we initiate the special education process. We would have to, again, suspect that a student may meet eligibility under the IDA, which is the federal law that governs special education, further defined by Comar for meeting disability criteria.
And I think a lot of times before that, teachers at the classroom level, team level are already putting in place interventions for students as this is going on simultaneously.
And I think that's-
It's not always discipline. I, I think it's important to share, we have, special education's primary responsibility isn't through the lens of behavior and discipline. It's through the lens of instruction, what instructional needs do we need to make? So plenty of our students are referred through the special education process that don't have any behavioral concerns whatsoever. I, I definitely want to share that.
I think it's important for the community to know that. So it's not like, okay, you know, some of the things we have heard, it's not, okay, well, this kid needs right away, needs services, they got to get help. There's a process for it, it's not an automatic thing. The next question is, what do you do if a parent denies any help?
So we, we, we need parental consent to, to conduct assessments, which is typically a part of that eligibility process. If a, you know, we can't conduct assessments without parental consent. Notice and consent is one of the things that IEP teams provide to families when they identify the need for assessments. And, and, and in the vast majority of times, significant majority of times, you know, families are very much a part of that process. So it's not just a, let's have a meeting, we want to, you know, we, we want to determine if your child's eligible. There's a lot more that happens and interactions that happen between that school and that family building in, you know, to that. We don't wait too long, we don't rush too soon, but that decision of when we initiate that process is individualized to the student. School staff can initiate, can initiate the process or a family can, can initiate. And in other instances, other folks can make referrals, especially for our younger, youngest of kids, especially our, our students that receive services, birth decay. But, but anyhow, that's a very individualized decision.
I guess that I think it is just important for the community to understand how, how the process is done.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think one more thing, if I could, let's set aside special needs. Just what about pure behavior intervention plans for folks that don't have any disabilities? What's, what's kind of the process for that? I mean, again, I know you can't have a X, Y, Z defined structure, but I, I mean, like how many folks in our school system do have BIPs that aren't IEP related? Is, is it a lot, is it little, does it happen quickly?
I think there are two categories of that. A BIP is more, I'd say more of a formal behavior plan. Now again, a student doesn't have to be in the special ed process to, to have maybe a more formalized plan. But there's lots of informal plans that exist. It's often the, you know, the first line of support. Sometimes a teacher will develop that implement, develop that independently. Sometimes that teacher may work with their team. So if I'm a first grade teacher and I have a student that's struggling in my weekly meetings with my team, I might say, give me some ideas on an event, intervention that I could try. Maybe it's as simple as a little, a token system where I earn, you know, you know, I earn for, earn some sort of visual for meeting an expectation that maybe then I use for something unique or special down the road. That's an informal plan. So those happen pretty frequently, you know, with our students, especially in our, our younger grades in particular. But exact number, I couldn't give you on the informal pieces, but that's part of that ongoing, you know, piece. I would say those strategies are maybe more in that yellow zone if we go back to that pyramid. Maybe those informal strategies beyond the universal supports, you know, probably, you know, typically within that pyramid, you're looking maybe 15-ish percent in that, in that yellow zone and roughly 5%-ish, for, for, for lack of a better way of describing it, in that red zone piece. So would be my approximate estimate for that.
I guess I, I know that we're, you know, we're, we're running long. You know, I haven't necessarily had a whole lot of discussion as to what can, what can we do as a board to help the process, right? Like is it, I mean, I know that our, our gateway and our pride and our best programs are very successful. Do we need to be able to ramp some of those up? Do we need to, I mean, I know some of the, some of the things that we had talked, oh, okay, looks like.
I'm going to skip a couple of slides, Ms. Vindian, I'm going to segue in that and I'll open it up for, for discussion. So we, we pulled back on the rec, we pulled out, again, the recommendations of the, of the task force from a few years ago. You know, obviously a couple of four core areas, focus on direct service for the students, behavioral and mental health staffing and, and, and teachers to reduce class size. You know, that is a, you know, that is, we've been able to, I, we've been able to add some behavioral and mental health staffing, but in very specific, you know, places. Professional learning, that still, you know, remains true. The challenge, and schools do this kind of on an individual basis, but it's, it's that time and opportunity that's a challenge to be able to, to do systemic or greater professional learning. We're getting better with sub-coverage in our schools, but that's not the solution for rotating our staff through. That can help in some isolated areas, but we still need that time for, for, for professional learning. The other big thing is we've, we've got to, we, we will continue to link with partners and communicate expectations. But we've got to expand, in my opinion, the resources that we have available for parents. Is that evening trainings, is it some summer workshops? You know, giving parents the tools that, you know, to help reinforce, you know, what it is that we're doing. I think that's a big piece of it. And then, you know, continuing, and we, and we've expanded our Second Step program. Well, I've expanded, it's everywhere now. That's a big part of the, of that last piece through curriculum and instruction. And then, you know, continue to provide teachers with the tools that they need to help with interventions and academic struggles. Sometimes, sometimes we see behaviors because a student is struggling academically. If we can better meet the academic need, we see less, you know, student behaviors and vice versa. So that's not the scenario in, in every case. But being able to expand our interventions that we have available.
And I think before you go, and I, we do need to go into the legal requirements quickly. I think that's an important part of this presentation. But before we do that, I'll just add that, you know, the PLEs that we have started at middle school and high school are, are so far looking very successful. And so I think as we look into the future, and we've had many, many long conversations and meetings about this here among staff, I think we will always have our, our regional resources for kids. But I think more and more, we're going to look to find ways to provide smaller structured environments within the buildings themselves. And so as we look, you know, five years down the road, 10 years down the road, I think that's, that's where it's going to be at.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, if you look at some of those numbers, I mean, you want to, where are you going to get the biggest bang for the buck? Like right now, it looks like the biggest problem is physical interaction at the elementary schools, right? I mean, that's the largest number of referrals, it's the largest number of distinct students and it's wreaking havoc. It's what we're hearing-
Right.
-from parents, we're hearing it from teachers, we're hearing it from other students. Like that, that's what, so how do you, how do you immediately address that? And the fact that there are, you know, on average, there are more than four incidents per distinct student, which means that there are probably some students that have eight.
Right.
Right, like at what point does that become an imminent threat, right? Like, and, and how do you deal with that? And I'm sure that we'll get into that with some of the legal-
Yeah.
-discussion, but it's like, that seems like the, a good place to dive in deep immediately because that's where the biggest problem seems to be.
Absolutely.
If I could make one more comment too, and I appreciate all the recommendations. But one of the things I see missing is what about encouraging parents to come in and work in the building? What about getting more parent involved in our schools? Being those extra hands in the cafeteria for monitoring, being those extra hands in the library helping shelving books. But just the fact that we have more parents in the building, you know, I mean, kids are going to act, you know, they're going to, wait a minute, there's my neighbors, you know, there's my neighbor in the building, you know. there's my neighbor in the building, you know, but that has a very powerful impact on shaping student behavior, in my opinion. And I hope we approach this not only with providing the necessary resources that you've talked about to date, but also we need to develop a parent component into this, and ensuring and facilitating parent access, so that they can help us, um, you know, attack this issue as well.
Agreed. We welcome parent volunteers in our classrooms.
Go ahead. Uh, Mr. Shockley, would you quickly go through the legal-
Sure, just very, very quickly, just there, there are legal requirements, um, that, that we have to, obviously, we have to honor. Um, we talked about before that there's a prohibition on the suspension of, of pre-K to second grade students. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, actually, Mr. Streaker will. Um, there are protections for students with disabilities identified in the IDA, further defined in Comar. Um, the, the challenge, the challenge for our students with disabilities, if we u- the criteria in which we use to determine eligibility for a student, um, if we use that criteria to say that a student is now eligible based upon one of the categories, it is, it is difficult to discipline those students in the end for what we would call a manifestation of that disability. And I'll talk, Ms. Widow will talk very briefly about that in, in a moment. There also have been changes to the reportable offense statute, and then juvenile justice reform. We'll talk more about that in individual slides, very briefly, as we, as we go. Mr. Streaker, very briefly, on the prohibition piece, on the, on pre-K to two suspension-
This is where I hope parents really listen up.
Yeah.
Because these are the obstacles.
Yes.
This is right out of Comar. I mean, uh, Mr. Omeley shared this at the last board meeting, I, I don't need to read it to you, but the, particularly point two, B2, um, talks about, like, what our restrictions are on that. The imminent threat of serious harm to other students that cannot be reduced or eliminated through interventions and support. So, um, and again, the limitation is for no more than five school days, uh, per occurrence, to give you that, um, concept. Um, and Ms. Widow will talk about the special education impacts of, of that five school, you know, we get into that. The other piece that's important is how the state, um, through guidance through the State Department, that's on the next slide, um, the state identifies the definition of imminent threat of serious harm, the way they define that is likely an immediate danger of significant physical injury. Um, and then further describe the inability of a child to de-escalate after an intervention and return to the classroom without continuing the physical attack, on either student, or either staff or students, would constitute an imminent threat. That physical attack would be, like, immediately, and I think that's an important piece here, doesn't mean that it happens again at a, a future time, um, immediately meaning after preventative measures, things are put in place, the student walks right back in and has the same, um, immediately the same behavior, that would rise to that. Um, I also want to point out that it is illegal to suspend a student for chronic disruption pre-K to two. So in, in, when you, so this is all about physical interaction, chronic disruption, just yelling, getting upset, you know, hitting their desk, like, things that you could think of that would be very distracting to learning at, beyond third grade and up, that those, those behaviors, if they're chronic and disruptive enough, can lead to suspension. They can. They don't always, but those disruptions, if you look at that, the suspensions we have, most suspensions for disruptive behavior are based on a repeated pattern of chronic behavior. If you think back to the, the data we shared on suspensions for that, none of those are alum-, are pre-K to two, zero. Because a repeated pattern of disruptive behavior is, we're not legally allowed to suspend a student for that. It's only imminent threat of serious harm. So I do think that's an important piece to point out.
And I want to say one thing. We did invite the delegation, again, I just want to let everybody to know that, we did invite them, and it's very important that we do work with them hand in hand, and it's not like I haven't been calling April and, and Chris all through, uh, this session, but, um, they are the ones that can help us, and they have an uphill battle on that.
And I do think they would have attended if it was in crossover day.
Oh, yeah, I know they would have been here, because they've attended many of our functions before, but they're in crossover, so I just want to make sure.
And I do think what's troubling, again, being on the Maybod Legislative Committee along with you, Madam President, is that we're seeing legislation at the state level, which doesn't help this issue.
No.
I mean, they're passing legislation at the state level that ties hands even more, that puts a more emphasis on restorative practices and more emphasis on not disciplining children. And so, you know, I, I just, a lot of parents out there are quick to complain, are quick to voice concerns, and make the assumption that our unbelievable staff and our unbelievable teachers are not taking action. They are. But there are so many things in this that, um, tie hands, and we're not getting a lot of help, um, in Annapolis with this issue. So it's really important for parents to understand that.
Yeah, and I think, I know we, we talk about how we, there's a prohibition on suspension for pre-K to two, but that's why I'm asking the question, like, what can we as-
Absolutely.
-board members do to help, right? Because the, the, what gets lost in the shuffle, and what they don't understand in Annapolis, apparently, is that these kids are so disruptive, that we're, we're basically penalizing all of the kids who aren't disruptive. I mean, it's so-
That's very frustrating.
We're, we're losing academic performance on the vast majority of our kids because of this group that we can't seem to get under control. So, okay, we can't suspend them, how else can we address it? And what is, what is a more effective way to be doing it? I mean, I know you guys are doing the best that you can with the funds that you have and, and the current legal situation, but can we identify some things like, you know, okay, maybe there's a, a mini pride program at multiple of our elementary schools or something? Like, what does that cost?
Right.
Right? I mean, obviously, there's not unlimited funds, um, you know, from the commissioners, but if we could make a case for, we think this would dramatically improve academic performance and dramatically improve lots of other, you know, behaviors and the safe, because our, our schools are becoming less and less safe because of the things that are being put into regulation down in Annapolis, right? So how do we combat that at the local level?
Or even space in the school for it, too. Because some of our schools, we don't even have the space to have that other classroom to help with those ten students.
Yeah, right.
This school year, we started having those conversations, what that might look like, um, what kind of funding we would need to do it. Um, and it's complex, um, you know, because there, there are, um, there are laws and policies around, um, pulling students out of a general population, and so we always have to be very cognizant when we're doing that, that we're looking at everything for the child and not just making a snap decision and pulling a child out. So we're, we've started having those conversations this year. Um, that's something that we are looking to find answers to, um, perhaps through Blueprint, um, but we will keep the board informed of that.
Well, I know, we, we've talked about the eleven million dollars of comp ed funding, right? Are we, are we focusing that in the right ways? I mean, there is money there from a comp ed perspective.
Yes.
Are we focusing it in the places that gon-, that is gonna get us the biggest bang for the buck, right?
So what we'll do is, is, at the end of this year, we'll look at, um, where we place the comp ed money and what did it do for us? And then we'll look at, is there any restructuring we need to do with any of that comp ed money so that we can get a bitter, bigger bang for our buck, take care of more issues with the funding that we have? I think, I think our biggest issue is going to be, um, that we're going to have schools that are not comp ed schools that we need more supports in. And Blueprint doesn't necessarily allow that or support that right now. So those are issues that we're, we're working with, um, that we're, um, that we're working with our facilitator Frank on, um, so that, so that we really can, you know, look at how we're using that Blueprint funding and be able to use it where we really need it. Um, and that's, again, a non-restriction of the Blueprint funding, which we keep saying over and over again, is what we really need to help us, um, to meet the needs.
But you know, while we're, again, sort of trying to look ahead and make those plans, in the interim, what are we doing with this disruptive behavior? Are we getting it out of the classroom, um, so that the students who are tuned in and ready to learn are afforded that opportunity?
It depends on the student and the situation. Um, it depends on the laws surrounding the individual students who are having the most challenges.
Again, disruptive behavior doesn't belong in the classroom.
Yeah, again, and that's, I think, what the frustration of parents is, is they don't realize, child A may not have a special disability or an IEP or a 504. Their process of dealing with an issue of a disruptive student is far different than the process of dealing with a child that does have an IEP or a 504. It's extremely different. And, um, and so it's just really important for the parents to understand that. And, um, but I, I really appreciate everyone doing what they can with what they have, because I see that you're doing that, but many parents don't, and, um-
But getting them out until they can at least calm down enough to be returned.
Agreed, yeah.
Hopefully, we're taking a look and doing that.
Sure, and that works on a short-term basis, um, you know, but it's the, you know, it's one thing if a student's disruptive, be able to remove them till they de-escalate, and then we can strategically reintegrate that student into the classroom. We couldn't remove that student depending upon what protections that student's afforded for a, for, for days or weeks at a time. That's the difficult-
Well, I'm not suggesting that, of course.
But you're, but just at the, on the short-term piece, yes, most definitely.
What, what would happen if, let's say, we broke the law? Because that's something else we hear, well, call their bluff, that's something else we all hear, call their bluff, call their bluff and see what happens. So I think that's something good for you to-
All you have to do is look next door to Frederick County, and you'll find the answer to that.
Absolutely.
And the U.S. Department of Justice, uh, came in and really, uh, imposed some very, very drastic measures on Frederick County public schools. Uh, they had to enter into a, a consent agreement. Uh, the superintendent, uh, left shortly thereafter. Uh, that's the answer to your question.
Right. And that's the thing, I, I keep telling people, they're like, when you're making excuses, I'm like, that, that's, these aren't excuses, they're like, our superintendent is doing an amazing job, she's following up with the administrator, she's trying to make sure everything is taken care of. You know, our teachers are doing an amazing job, they're, they're doing what they have and what they have to work with. And then there's the laws that kind of oversee every single bit around that. And it's, it's the difficult part.
And so, there may be, there may be a temptation to say, well, we can do things and get away with it. And like I said, Frederick County is a perfect example. No.
Right. I mean, we're already trying to find funding as it is. I would never want to call bluff, especially if we're like, hey, we need more funds to take care of our teachers and to get the staff we need to help with the supportive services. I would never want to do that to the school system and put our children at risk. I don't think that's an appropriate way to do it.
I just think it's very nice that you've, um, illustrated very well for the public how you've spent that eleven million dollars of Blueprint money in making sure that we address these issues. So I don't want the critics out there to think that nothing is being done, because eleven million dollars was used to hire, what, a hundred and twenty-something people? And this staff has put those resources in place to make things happen, and so, but what can we do more? What can we do?
I am gonna say one thing. For all those years I taught, um, it all starts at home. It all starts at home. I taught several murders at North Carroll High School, and it all was, the five, uh, killed a parent, and one was a robbery, and it was from dysfunctional families. And, uh, we really need to help these families. But my, I also understand that we have to help those children that are disrupting the classroom so that we can get on with the other students that it's, that they need to get their academics-
Exactly.
-in, in line. And I, I do understand that, but it, it really does start at home, and it starts at an early age. And, you know, it's, my statistic is really something else, but, um, but they were from dysfunctional families, and, um, that we really need to get to the heart of, of that and the idea of having parents come in and help and understand. Um, but we don't get that all the time. We, they, they will put up a, a block, but we need to, we need to get there.
Yeah, and we need to find, and we need to engage with families.
All the time.
Dr. Dorsey talked earlier about some specific student groups.
Absolutely.
We need to be engaging with these families, getting them in, involved, help building capacity where needed, um, helping parents help us build our capacity, um, where needed as well, too, and where appropriate. Um, but again, I don't want to, as we continue to talk about all these additional strategies and supports, these are all in addition to discipline, they're not in lieu of, uh, discipline. We will continue to utilize, uh, discipline to communicate with families and, and hold students accountable for our expectations, but we do need to continue, uh, to problem solve. You all have all heard me say we're in the business of, of continuous improvement. We are always working to identify, you know, barriers and work to overcome them as we, as we go.
Mr. Shockley, as a board, this was excellent. You all can agree. I know we've got more to work on, but this was a great explanation, you and your team, everybody here, um, explaining to everyone here in this room, plus the people that are watching, how difficult a job this is.
And we're not even done, Mr.-
And it's not gonna be fixed overnight, no, and we're still not, and we're not done.
Well, a couple of things-
But I want to, I do want to thank you all.
Yep, I'm gonna jump right to the end, just thank you, uh, President Herbert, um, just, just again, to the, just the, the list of the recommendations that we've offered as a committee. Obviously, we're gonna continue the good things that are already in place, we're always gonna continue to work to do better, um, at our jobs and help others do better, um, but by working together, supporting our new staff, um, let's expand opportunities and learning for our staff, um, expand those mental health resources, um, and, and expand those mental hea-, health resources in GenEd. Um, and speaking in generalities, um, if we can layer those supports, we're going to hopefully decrease the need for, um, special education services. We are not disproportionate in our overall identification of students, we've always been in a good place with that. But a lot of our resources are in special education, we need to expand our resources in GenEd, um, as well, but also expanding those special ed resources so we can respond, um, as well, and then really build out, um, our MTSS model. We have a loose MTSS model here, um, there's a lot of, a lot of work we can continue to do to make it what we're doing, and then let's really target things at the, at the elementary level.
Other, I see some other questions.
Right, um, so as, as we kind of talked about earlier, it's, we mentioned, you know, bringing families in, but to the students who live in unsafe situations, to the students who can't or don't want their parents to be involved because they're in unsafe situations, I think that those restorative practices are probably really good methods to make sure students feel safe and feel accepted by their schools. And when we don't get families, that's when those practices come in, and that's when students can receive the most amount of help possible. I think one thing I kind of wanted to, um, mention before we ended this is, going back to the statistics early on, um, I, and I, I know this, I know I and a lot of other students would like to see the proportions of, um, the populations, so, um, when we, uh, look at how many students in, um, specific, um, minority groups see the percentage compared to the population of the students as a whole, and so that way we can compare if there are certain groups being disproportionately affected by, um, over suspensions or over referrals, that way we can see the defining aspects, and that way we can even reach out to, um, teachers and administrators who, um, may be experiencing forms of bias in order to make sure that all students, um, feel safe and accepted by their schools. Uh, I wanted to get that out before, um, we ended.
That's a very good point. Uh, I do believe, aren't we required to provide that kind of reporting to the state?
Well, that's why we were looking at the numbers earlier and looking at those subgroup numbers, um, and, you know, Sahithia's hitting on, you know-
Yeah, and it's a good point, but just so you know, that, that data is reported to the state, and, yeah, hopefully, we don't have an issue of that's, of that happening here in this county, right?
Mm-hmm. Um, one more thing is, when we talk about, uh, resources and recommendations, I think another thing that could be implemented in the future is giving more, uh, support, um, financially, giving more support in general to, um, outlets for students, and this goes more than just, um, pride or, um, uh, sources of strength. Um, we can also go into supporting our school clubs more, giving students outlets, I think those regurgitate right back into students and, um, have a correlation to help behavior, too. Right, and all of this comes back to truly just wanting to do what's best for students, and even the students that struggle with behavior issues deserve just as much support and deserve just as much- support and deserve just as much time and attention as students who don't. So I appreciate all of this information.
Thank you.
I just, just as a, a last thought, I wanted to say, like, you had said, Ms. Herbert, how we invited the delegation, but they weren't able to come because of the timing. I'd almost want to follow up, maybe sometime in the summer or, you know, maybe well in advance of our next, I know we meet with the delegates every, like, October, but maybe we have a work session with them in advance of that particular meeting, just to, just so that there's.
Before we leave.
Yeah, exactly. Just so that there's thinking about, I mean, I know that it, things are going in the wrong direction in Annapolis, right? Like, they're taking more and more control away. They're taking away more and more ability to actually do things that will be effective. What they, what they seem to be missing in Annapolis is that as they're making these changes, things are going in the wrong direction, right? Like, every change they, they make seems to make it worse from a behavioral perspective. So maybe if we can present some of that data, you know, we're not the only school system in the state that is experiencing this. In fact, I think probably every school system is experiencing this, right? Like, is there a way that we can band together and show the data and show how this is impactful? And then maybe we can get a little bit more traction in Annapolis. I know that we're fighting an uphill battle in Annapolis, but I feel like there are enough counties that are in kind of similar positions to us, that if we can kind of band together and show the data and show the trends and say, we think that this would be more beneficial.
Yeah, I'm encouraged by the governor. I mean, even the governor recognizes juvenile justice reform is needed on the whole. But it's not just with 20-somethings, but it's also with teens. And, I mean, goes right down to elementary schools. So I think, I'm, I'm hopeful that the governor and the staff will have a, you know, a, a good ear, you know, to, for us to give them information as well.
But if we could plant some seeds of things that might be beneficial, right? Like, okay, well, this is, this is the rag that really, really took our feet out from under us, right? And we think that it would have this impact if we could give that information to our delegates, and they could then talk with their counterparts in other counties and see if they can get some traction around that. Right? Like, it, it almost has to be like a grassroots campaign.
I was gonna say, I think MAAB and Mayor, MAAB and then the Maryland Teachers Union, I think those two need to have a conversation. Like, this is what, you know, this is what the boards are saying, this is what the teachers are saying. All right, let's, let's work on some legislation here, because I think that is, would be the great direction to go.
And I think that's a good point, because I'm seeing even the Teachers Union at the state level, they're, they're championing issues that don't help us. They're.
Or our teachers in this county.
Right. And, you know, so the things that we hear from our employer groups here locally on our Wednesday board meetings, things about students acting out and can you do something about this, there are unions at the state level are championing legislation.
That undermines that.
That undermines us to do things to help protect our employee groups. And so it's not just, you know, our legislators, but also our employer groups at the state level need, need to get on board with this as well.
Yeah, this is a conversation that we need to continue to have.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that. Anything else?
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Job well done.